Okay, call the meeting to order. This is our slightly irregular first meeting of August, which was moved because of a training for our administrators on the first Tuesday in August. So it's Monday, July 31st, starting our meeting around 6:00 PM. So I'll take any changes or additions to the agenda. And I think for our discussion, we were gonna hit on the radar list, which we can just do publicly. Okay, okay, so I will take a motion to approve the minutes. And I'm gonna do them in the bulk unless somebody has an edit and then we won't. So we'll approve the minutes of May 2nd, 2023, May 24th, 2023, and June 6th, 2023. Beth moves the motion.
I will second them.
Heather seconds the motion. Okay, any changes? Hearing none, we will vote. All those with favor, please signify by saying aye and we'll do a roll call. Aye, that is an aye. Heather?
Aye.
And Nikki is an aye, so the vote of three to nothing, minutes have passed. Do we have any public participation or announce? This might be the policy that you're representing. The administrators out on the board. Okay, we might, in case anybody views it, announce the first day of school.
Yes, which is August 30th, Wednesday, August 30th.
Wednesday, August 30th, okay?
And while on that, Nikki, I think it's important for me to note the first three days of school, the 30th, 31st, and September 1st, for kindergarten only is a 12 o'clock release.
Okay.
I'm so excited, I'm not in that boat anymore, woo!
I think that's great to do it, I think.
It's good for the kids.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I really like the three, four, five start there.
Yep, yep.
For the good for teachers to go.
It's a good way to ease into it.
Yeah.
Yeah, to build stamina up. Okay, so we're on to the administrative report.
All right, so I will share my screen. Yeah, it's not a long one. All right. Looking at Christine's screen, I'm sure she can see it. Yep, we are good, okay. So a big summer update as we move to the main office. It is across the hall. It worked out really nicely that there is an offshoot to the nurses' office from there and two other offices, one for myself, one for Alina. There, what that move has done, along with some other couple shifts, is it is allowed for more staff members to have confidential spaces where they can work with students, which is really, really great.
I need to tour, well, we'll tour after we get through this.
Yeah, yeah, so it's, that's the big, big. There are some other shifts in terms of classrooms and stuff, but that's the big one. That's what we'll put out to families and then welcome back, just to expect that that office is in a different place. We'll add some pictures, make a trip to user.
That's very rough for all families.
I, where am I going? Yep. The, the theme of this coming year for Heartland as well as all of the SU is the idea of belonging and really wanting every staff member and every student to feel like this is the place where they belong. So we now and through the year are going to be really intentional about activities and things with staff and the students, really to allow people to hopefully have that feeling of belonging for staff members. Hopefully that would lead to retention, because that's, at least for me, the biggest recruitment is keeping teachers. So I don't, we don't need to post positions. So this summer, I put out a couple Nighthawks games. Ended up going to one, the other one got rained out. This is certainly pretty rainy. We did go to one, which was really nice. I didn't, for some reason, actually never been to a Nighthawks game. Went with my two kids. It is great up there. It is really, really nice. It's free to get in. The season's over now, Chad Sturgeon, who is one of our PE teachers, is one of the coaches, which is really cool, too. So we are also doing a middle-level retreat on August 22nd. And all of those middle-level teachers together to really have some fun, certainly, but also have some conversations so we're all on the same page. It's tough, you know, having kids shift from room to room throughout the course of a day and when we're on the same page, it'll make it a lot easier for everybody. And on the 21st, the day before, we're going to do a staff-family potluck here. So anyone that wants to can bring their own kids and have, it'll be short, like an hour long. We'll do it from four to five, just have people together if they want to. If not, that's okay.
And that's, when do new teachers start back?
New teachers, the 23rd. Yep.
Lindsay, can I ask a question about how many teachers or how many staff members came to the Nighthawks game?
Oh gosh, there, we were a little spread out just because it was really sunny. So not ever, it wasn't too, too many. There was like four or five, which was fine, because it was optional for people to come, but I think they had a good time. And an enrollment update, right now we are at 2:40, this was at, actually, I just checked before we started. So as of today, we're at 2:40, but there are at least two or three that are in the wings that I know of that are, that are coming. We have...
Correct.
Correct.
Most of, most of the TKers were from Heartland. So it didn't change the enrollment here that much.
Right, but we would've lost kids that were... We included kids that are going away. So I'm just wondering how our numbers look compared to last year. Sounds like they're all the same.
They're right about the same. There are a few less, but I do attribute some of that to those, that program, that TK, in last year's enrollment numbers did include TK. A portion of those were Heartland students, but some were not. So now this 2:40 number is solely Heartland with 29 incoming kindergarten.
Which is a good solid number.
Which is a good solid number.
Yeah, okay. And then I guess when I'm saying we're not counting the TK program, it's the kids that would've come, so the TK program.
Yep.
Some are the same.
Correct. Correct. And hiring updates, we have two to bring to you this evening. The first one is Mike Foley. He will be the new music teacher. He's got a Master's in Music Education from the University of Nebraska-Lincoln and has at least six years of experience teaching as a music teacher. The interview committee was really blown away by him. He brings a lot of really positive energy, so we're really, really excited to have him join us.
Is he, what is his specialty in music?
I, yeah, because Jamie was, yeah, Jamie was talking to me. Yeah, Jamie was really, really excited.
Must be vocal.
And he's, it is vocal, but he's also done a lot of the younger grades, which is really exactly what we were looking for, so it worked really, really well. Yes, when we, when we walked him through and we were describing to him, he's like, wait, I can do what? I can help? How? Like, he, he is going to be full-on board with all the wonderful music opportunities that we have. So we're really excited.
Really excited.
Yep. The other name might be a little familiar, Michelle Carlson. She has worked at HES in years past. It's been a little while, but she's got her bachelor, bachelor as an elementary ed from Keene State. She has experience teaching middle level. And she's previously worked here at Heartland Elementary School and has a lot of relationships with some of the staff members that are already here, which is really nice. Yeah. Absolutely.
And which level should she be building?
Middle-level ELA. Hi, Ruby! She's here, where is she? All right, and the student rep on the board. So towards the end of the school year, Christine and I interviewed Scout, commonly goes by West, the Ogilvy, to be the student rep for Heartland Elementary School. And we are pleased to present her to you all as the HES student rep. I think she will be incredible. Really just such a knowledgeable, kind, just genuinely positive person. She is, she is amazing. And I think we can learn a lot from her and I think she can learn a lot from us and I think it'll be a great working relationship.
She's not afraid.
Lindsay, this sounds great. Is there, was there, like, was she our only applicant or was there more?
That's correct. She was the only one.
Cool, good.
Yeah, a great one.
And what's her onboarding process?
Well, I think we need to decide. My thought was she would come in September, once the school year starts. If there's anything you want me to fill her in on from now until then, that'll be our next meeting. I can do that.
Probably what her role will be, if she votes on things, is she in executive sessions, those kinds of things. She might need some.
Can, can we also have a follow-up on like what her role is on the board? Because like I think we, I think I need a little reminder about what, you know, the student rep on the board's role is as well.
Heather, what if we did this? What if I go over it with her, whether it's you and I and Christine or just her and I before the meeting, but would that be something that would be, I could put it on my administrative report for September, just in an outline, even though she's already gone over it? Okay.
Then, I'm sorry, I have another thing that I've been thinking about, wondering about, is there a place where like we've got a listing of everyone who's teaching and what their teaching roles are? Just so that like I can get people's names and what they teach. So when I see them, I'm like, oh yes, I know exactly who you are and what you teach. Do we have that, like, sort of labeled like kindergarten, first grade, second grade?
The handbook.
Okay. But I mean, if you just look online in the student, in the staff directory, it has like actual pictures.
I agree with that, but then I have to like, it, it, yes, that's fine. Just wondering if there was a shorthand of like, I could just like look and see what's going on.
The handbook, Heather would have all that in there.
Will have it.
Will, yeah, having, once we, it'll be updated once we send it out. And the next slide is that I am the HES rep for the Heartland Policing and Safety Committee. We've met twice. We plan to meet again on August 14th. The, really the big topics that we've spent, the first meeting was really just kind of getting to know each other. In the last meeting, we had Chief Frank, the Windsor Police Chief, come. And she really talked about the way Windsor PD works in general, answered questions of the community. Some of the common themes throughout the conversation have been response times within the community and then the philosophies around policing, whether it's proactive, reactive policing. She's like, nope, I'm good there.
I can quickly drop the puppy off and escape.
Oh, that's okay. Puppy for child, there you go.
Yep. One of the others.
So it was, it's been a good, it's been a good couple meetings with the Heartland Policing and Safety Committee. At this time, there is no recommendations moving forward. I think there may be, we're just not at that point right now, so I'll keep the board up.
They're gonna interview, and they're distracted. They're gonna interview their police officers in this place? Or are they gonna talk to the sheriffs or?
Right, yeah, the plan is to have Ryan Palmer come to the next meeting. He is the sheriff, Windsor County Sheriff, yep. So then I think right now is just talking to, to different police entities and getting their philosophies and trying to have an understanding and go from there. There was talk at our meeting, the last meeting was getting community input and how incredible, that's what Chief Frank had said, how incredibly important it is to get the community input and what do they want, what does the Heartland community want out of policing? And what does it look like for the community? Do you want something that is primarily reactive? Which I think is, is more along the lines of what's happening now with VSP? Or are you looking for something different that may be more proactive in a community-based approach? And it really is, is going to depend on what the community wants to do. So that was, that was her suggestion. I think that's a good one. And electric buses, and Heather, I don't know if actually you might have any insight from your professional work, but there were some community members that reached out around the idea of electric buses. So our bus company, who's Student Transportations of America, they are the ones who are beginning an application process. But we were just recently informed that Heartland was on a list that would have potentially been eligible, has been taken off the list. But that the, and the EPA was the ones that took us off the list. So they do believe, though, that in the future there will be opportunities. It just is kind of at a pause right now, but it's not completely off the table forever.
Is there a reason the EPA took it off?
I think it was based on, I wanna say, because I talked to Larry about it, it's, it's more than free and reduced. It's not just your actual free and reduced number, but there's other, other requirements. But he, he's confident that there's another pool of money that we may, we may qualify. So, but what's great about it is we don't have to apply, the bus company does, which is, which is great.
Yeah, and they actually said it's better.
Well, there is going to be, according to Larry, you get the money for the bus, but you would have to build the infrastructure to...
So you get the charges.
Yeah, yeah. So just something to think about. Because that is a, I think you mentioned around $40,000 cost upfront.
And who's our local?
I don't know, actually, I don't know.
Green Mountain Power?
Probably Green Mountain. Yeah.
Yeah.
And...
Efficiency Vermont, will they?
They might, yeah. And Larry did say of the buildings within the SU, Heartland is in a good place because we have that whole separate bus barn, which actually is more of an ideal place to try something like this.
Oh, yeah.
Yep. And Christine, you're up.
Be posted.
Are you sharing the screen?
Yeah.
I am recording it with Sid.
Oh, well, they can't read.
Oh, I've seen it online. Um, and, do you want me to take this? If you want to take that. This is, I'll just call her back. I'll just tell her, there's another meeting I may have to get into. Okay, I'm gonna go quick because there's a special meeting, I'm out of Scottney End there, I own a meeting, so. I'm reporting tonight that, oh yeah, you don't, you don't have it, you can't see it. 112, 112 students from all of our schools are enrolled in Summer Academy. It's the last week this week. On average, it's about 90 kids that show up every day, K-5, which is great. There were 30 full-time equivalent staff members or some part-time, so we did NFTs. And that's a higher number than last year because of the needs of the kids that are in the program. There's some one-on-ones that were needed, but it's gone, the smoothest ever gone, and we've been thrilled. And I think the kids even don't mind. Um, okay. And then on, for onboarding, I just wanted you to know that we worked really hard on our onboarding system. Part of it is to retain our staff. We want them to feel like they know what they're getting into and feel welcome and feel that sense of belonging. We've on-boarded 50 staff members this year. And we've set up a new system where they get to sign up for a time to come to the central office. And Tina and Brittany walk them through frontline and how to do their professional development and time sheets and all of that kind of stuff, which has been great. They get their Chromebooks, so we test their logins and they have everything that they need, which is wonderful. And we've done a new onboarding system, mostly Brittany. We've helped a little bit. She's given us, she's given us homework assignments. But there's a Google Classroom, which takes them, we had to do videos to introduce ourselves and work for them to do. And, and then there's a website that she's created. So they're, they're doing all their foundational trainings ahead of school starting and they get paid, I think, for six hours to do that. So it's been very successful. And that is all, that's the end of my report and I'm gonna just step out and get the other meeting started. I'll be right back.
I was wondering if that's how kids get enrolled in some summer academies, if I, teacher recommendation or is it?
Part of it is teacher recommendation, part of it is our MTSS process where we identify kiddos that may need extra support. Could be kiddo that is identified on a IEP 504, not exclusively, but through a variety of different ways. Not necessarily, more so by student need.
Well, it's just like this.
That's the end of the administrative report.
Okay.
That's it.
So did they have the participation last Thursday, it's still 12:00, it's Saturday? Oh yeah, I did think it was later than that in my brain. Okay. Yeah, it's the Wednesday before.
Yep.
Monday, Thursday.
Okay.
Yes.
I think I did actually know that, because I actually did know that somewhere. No, I knew that. Self-parents. My kid's birthday, my birthday.
Oh, that's hard.
Oh. But Ruben Doll is its own. Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, in my household, it was. Everybody, Cannover, or Waldorf. I'm not sure about Waldorf, actually, I probably need to do some research. Okay, so moving on to items for the discussion. We were not in a, in a retreat. You're not allowed to talk about policies and board direction. So we couldn't talk about the radar list during our board retreat. And so I just wanted to bring it up and Hannah may not even know. Actually, Heather, you don't even know how it was developed. So our radar list...
But I'll hear it again.
Yeah, I know I did tell you once. So the radar list, we developed over the course of like five meetings. It took a while. And we all kind of brainstormed things that were important to us. And then we looked for the overlap and came to a consensus on the things that we want to keep front and center. And part of the reason for developing it was the recognition that as we were moving through, it was developed while simultaneously, it was developed in supervisory union plan. And the idea is that we didn't want to have a second set of goals, since we were hoping that the supervisory plan would really meet Heartland's needs as far as goals and we didn't want to have to be kind of juggling two different sets of goals going forward. And so we developed the radar list as kind of a informal goal-setting list or just a list to keep at our front and center of things that we believe in and want to keep working towards. And so I thought that we should revisit it in a public session and just make sure that these are things that people still feel are important. And also, like, if you read part of the list, is there something that you, like, really think that we need to focus on in general? So, I mean, I think, so if we go through, the number one or the one at the top is community engagement. And that is probably, I think it is one of the supervisory unions' primary goals for the chair, right?
Yeah. Well, we haven't, we haven't had the SU board retreat yet.
Oh, right.
It's the 7th of August here. But, yes.
Yeah, exactly. And then it sounds like the theme moves together and that's also very much about open community. And I also think that we're really, with our community suffers, those are awesome.
Yeah, they're well-attended and we're really intentional on our end to try to pair it with something else. So like a back-to-school night, that also is a community endeavor. The more ways we can get people into the buildings, we know people's schedules are really hectic and busy. So if we can combine things together, save people time.
Thank you.
Yes, and feed them along.
I wonder if, just like looking at that list, not to jump ahead too much, but I wonder if the physical plant would be something just to really make sure we kind of, I know there's sort of work to think about that, but with all the discussions that are gonna happen around sort of personnel security, sort of security personnel, and also just like my general sense of the, you know, the, the community feeling, if that's really high on parents' list. And it might just be something to make sure we have at least a good sense, at least amongst the board, of sort of like what is, where are we at with that? What's our perspective on that security, what things have been done to it? And I don't know, you weren't probably part of this. We hired... I didn't, I knew about. Yeah. And one of the things that we're looking at is, so that'll be, when does that, like, I guess that work can start.
Yeah, it can.
It can start.
July 1st, yep.
So, yeah, I mean, that'll definitely be something that we want to learn about.
And the state's doing, building assessment in every school in the state. Right. Heartland was done last December, I think. We don't have the report back yet, but...
But it'll probably be better than what's I do.
Yeah.
It will. Yeah.
Hundred percent.
It's not been raining on.
Did you just throw us under the bus?
No.
What did you just throw us under the bus for? I missed that, because I can't hear everybody.
About bricks and water. Systems, not people.
Oh, it's so sad. Our high school's so gross.
And I actually think that's a good timing, though, Hannah, too, because Larry Dower is working on Heartland's five-year plan. So when he's done, I think it would probably be a great idea, Christine, you and I can invite him.
Come, yeah.
And he can come and talk about that five-year plan. Not, I don't, I don't...
Well, we have a very five-year plan for. Is he waiting to work on that until we have the feedback assessment?
I don't think so, but I'm not sure. I can reach out to Larry. I don't know what his timeline is. Do you know, Christine?
I think it's early fall, but be aware that those building audits are being done and it should, yeah, coincide.
Yeah, just thinking that those things may all really like come up nicely.
Yeah.
Just kidding, you know?
Yeah. Um, can we discuss or add teacher and staff retention onto our list as well? Just because I feel like, I feel like it's an important thing.
Yeah, I think that's great, Heather.
And maybe not retention, but I don't want to call it security, but it's, it's not just about keeping them, it's about keeping them and keeping them happy.
Yeah.
Satisfaction, is the word. And I also, like, I'll note, like, I think that's a great one to add, but I sort of wanted to get too long. So if you see one that we should get rid of, or if it's too well-covered.
I was just wondering, proficiency-based education. I, can I have the background on why that one is on there? Only because I, well, I just, yeah, can I hear some background on that one?
It was, the list was developed right when that was, that transition was happening. So there was a lot of confusion, misunderstanding and training that needed to happen.
Still does.
It still does, yeah, at the time. And, I mean, I'll be honest, looking at the list, that's the one that I want to get rid of, because I think all of that is happening at the supervisory union level.
Yes.
It's a lot, it's in a very different place from...
The curriculum change.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, can I just ask a question? Because I don't, I feel like as a parent of a third grader and a, well, now a fourth grader and a first grader, whatever, but like, when it comes to getting feedback on like where my child is, like, is it, what is the protocol for the lower grades for actually seeing like how my child is doing? Do you know what I mean? Like, should I, like, when I went to look on Power School, like, I could see some things on there. Like, is that normal or like, or should I see more things? Should I see less things? Would, I'm just wondering, like, how is, how is grading being reported other than like me having to go to Power School and being like click on my kids' names?
So Heather, teachers are expected to regularly be inputting grades into Power School, but that might look different in a seventh-grade classroom than it does in a first-grade classroom, if that makes sense. You might see more grades uploaded in a seventh-grade classroom than you may in a first-grade classroom. Does that answer your question?
That totally answers my question. It would be really lovely if we, like, if parents sort of got notified as to like what to expect. Like, what should we expect on Power School? Like, what are the first-grade teachers gonna put on there? What are the third-grade teachers gonna put on there? Like, the seventh-grade teachers and the eighth-grade teachers, I can, and sixth, I can imagine, there's lots of grades going in in Power School, but like, I totally get why my kindergartner, like, there, you know, there was barely anything in there, totally understand. But, like, I think, I think I heard feedback from some parents, and this is why I'm talking about it under the radar, because I don't know if this is a radarless thing or just something we can sort of solve. or just something we can sort of solve. But a lot of feedback I got was like, I, I don't know, I don't know what I'm supposed to expect on Power School, especially for like the kids in, you know, like K through, K through three is like my hangout spot, so. So that's all I know is that there's, like, I would have loved for me to know, like, it will be, there will be five grades in there by January or something, just so that I had an idea of like when I should go looking and hunting around for things.
Oh, that makes sense. So we can, we can make sure the teachers put out there what to expect for parents. And a part of it is, we spent a lot of last year trying to just get parents on to Power School and we still have some work to do with that, but we can also make sure the teachers put out, you know, these are the types of things you will see in our classroom in Power School.
So when you guys have your back-to-school night, it might be really awesome. I don't, I, I don't remember if this was one of them, but to have like a Power School, like, come on, let's all do Power School together, um, that might be really helpful.
Yeah, we did that last year and got a few. We can definitely do it again this year.
You, you should start to, um, have more, um, feedback too soon, Heather, with, with EduClimber and the STAR assessment that we're gonna be doing this year. They talk in the systems and you're gonna be, and Brittany showed me some of the reports that you can run in EduClimber, um, and parents will be able to get some of that information, which will be really, really helpful, yeah.
I will say along the same lines, um, it would be nice, um, when we end our terms, maybe to just shoot a note to parents and say that.
Check.
Terms ending.
Yeah, yeah.
Because.
Yep, yeah.
Yeah, I totally agree. Unless there's a problem, like unless like all of a sudden.
Yeah.
Like, oh, they're missing X, Y, and Z assignments.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll be honest, I need to check those.
But it doesn't, it doesn't reset every semester, you know that, right? I mean, it's.
Right, yeah, it's right, but it's just. I know, but like I just opened it and there's nothing there for my kids. And you can't, there's no way, I tried to go back, they're like, well, what was last year?
Yeah.
And it's, I can't go back.
You can't go back.
See last year.
And I never.
And now that it's after. It's been a while. It's been a while, yeah.
Which is, well, why can't, I mean, I, I don't know, like, probably wants to see my kids' history from kindergarten.
Like, you could, tech, tech can get it for you.
You know, but that's not like, if, if.
That just seems, I think there's a history, there used to be a history tab. I just tried to look and see, because I thought here you could pull down, because it's just this class overview twenty-three, twenty-four. And I was like, oh, well, do twenty-two, twenty-three.
And there's nothing.
Given an option of select term. But, um.
But reminders would, would be good.
Yeah.
Yep.
But I mean, I mean, I'll be honest, I mean, I miss, I mean, the number, like, one, two, three, four. Like, that doesn't, I don't get a lot from it, you know? Like, that's really, I mean, this is no ID difference in A, B, C, D, you know, it's not a lot. It's really the narrative of where are they, where, how can I help? Where is that? And so it's like, what's the balance between having meetings with the teachers who can get that narrative versus can they put a sentence or two in Power School or like what's? Because I don't know where to aim my, my support.
Yep.
In ways.
The end of the year, end of year teacher meetings are sort of optional, is that, is that a crossword or was that just, I only have one year of experience, like Lauren Spilland sort of offered end-of-year parent-teacher meetings for that kind of narrative?
Was it the end, end of year?
Yeah, like, you know, at the end of kindergarten, there's not like, so that, is that?
That's, she did that.
But most teachers do not do that.
But we just have parent-teacher conferences twice a year.
Twice a year, yep.
So, yes, you don't really get that like end-of-term-end-of-year narrative unless you were to ask for it, which like.
Yeah, it's like you don't wanna have so.
On the end of the year, right, right.
But I feel like I have a much clearer idea of where I know where Silas is being, that he is an IP. And so we're getting a lot more feedback of what's coming.
Well, I was wondering if this.
Versus tomorrow, I'm kind of like.
I was wondering if this, this bullet point that is special education, like if there's, if there's something that we should make more general that is some way to frame that, that's like, you know, in general, you know, educational progress report, I mean, I don't know, something for, more broadly for students, including those who plan those, but I don't wanna minimize the importance of keeping special ed stuff.
Yeah.
Well, I feel like special ed's clicked down on our list quite a bit and this is with the structural changes that were in place.
Yes.
You know?
Special ed was very, very, very high on the list.
So maybe then in some like revision of that, there should be some way to sort of say like, you know, because community engagement's not so much about sort of parent-teacher, um, conversation, that's really about like school engagement, right? But maybe there's some way to sort of more, or, you know, roll special education up into some bullet point that is.
Student progress.
Yeah, student progress, you know, individual learning kind of thing that can encompass both special education and those plans and keep that at the forefront, but then also be thinking about, um, you know, more.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
Communicating student progress.
Yeah, it's communicating, it's all of it, though. It's also like student engagement, which is also, there's engagement preparation and variety.
What does that refer to?
Sorry, that's, it's student engagement. Yeah. Yeah.
There is a history of grades.
Yeah, I think it might not be should have gone before. And on that phone now, yeah. I've never used it on the computer, I've never been able to get on the computer with it. I just only use.
Well, what makes you go any better, I just texted Heather and said, was there Power? Power School?
I'm a good.
And kindergarten's gonna be the least amount of grades.
Right, 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 no, I just. It was like, was there this thing uploaded that I didn't know about? He wanted to go back the next day. I took that as the narrative.
Yeah. There you go.
Engaged.
Yeah.
Okay, I think as we break these bullet lists, I'm gonna come back to the stuff again. Because I, I don't wanna just like make changes, be like, okay, we can totally change.
Yeah, no, no, I think, yeah.
Okay, yeah, so the, oh, we talked about, um, so there's, to go back up, there's social emotional, um, which I think is still critical and I'm excited about the, um, the new individual spaces. Make a big part of social emotional. Help with some of our students.
Do we wanna add, um, do we wanna add DEI as a bullet point? As sort of something that is gonna be kind of with the, the, yes, assessment that was done? It's really thinking about that as it affects all parts of.
Yes, and Tracy, our new, she's here, she's in Vermont, she found a house, which is great. And, um, she'll be reporting at the SU board level, I think, twice. Put her on the schedule for next year as well, so.
I think it's also just it's, for our radar list, like, how are things going? Is there anything like, like something that we had last year that we wanna move through? Okay, uh, so then the engagement preparation and variety, that was more, um, it's like students' education, which is also, like, all of these tie exactly, so these were all written before we wrote the supervisory plan that they all like.
Yeah, it's pretty great.
SU plan, yeah. So I don't know if we wanna, I think we do wanna keep that on there because we've definitely, um, struggled with creating, I don't have the right words right now, but, you know, creating plans that allow kids to explore in their own way. Like, we started, we kind of built, we started as a, a level especially.
Yeah, and it's, it's in the strategic plan.
Yeah, exactly. Um, okay, and then, so I think there was a proposal to get rid of proficiency-based education because I don't feel the need to keep traffic with anymore because like, yes, you was.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. It's well in progress now, whereas when we wrote it down, it wasn't. And then the process, the stick-to-our role as a board, I think it's always important to have on our radar list that we're not steering the road in a bad way. Okay, um, so that.
Will you read those back? Maybe just to make sure I have everything.
Yeah, um, I can also text you a picture of them.
Yeah, that's fine. Well, I, well, I can read you what I have. I just, I don't, I have community engagement.
Yep.
Social emotional.
Yep.
Engagement, preparation, variety, staff satisfaction.
Yep.
Physical plant.
Yep.
Communicating student progress.
Yep.
Diversity, equity, inclusion.
And then teacher staff satisfaction.
I had staff.
Oh.
Yep, staff, I put staff satisfaction. Okay, all right, I'll just email to Laura, uh-huh, Lori.
Yeah, um, okay. Cool, I think that was a good discussion. So, um, now, I think we had given administration the approval to do hiring while we were gone, but I was wondering if we should just vote on it, make it formal and to make sure that those teachers feel very welcome by us, um, in case they go read our minutes. So, um, so I would take a motion to hire Mike Foley, right?
Foley.
Foley, okay. Um, and Michelle Carlson, um, under our staff. Mike will be the music, one of the music teachers and Michelle will be a mid-level BLA. A motion?
Make a motion.
Okay, so Hannah makes the motion. Beth seconds, uh, and we'll do a roll call. Is there any further discussion on those? No? Okay, so we'll do a roll call. Beth?
Aye.
Hannah?
Aye.
Nikki?
Aye.
Heather?
Aye.
Awesome, okay. So that was a vote of four to nothing, um, and we are excited to have these new staff members. Look forward to being them.
Can I ask you a question? Because I think I might have missed this on staff retreat. Who did we hire for the math position?
It'd be Cynthia Glenn.
Okay, thank you.
And do we need to vote on this?
What was your process?
I'm coming in with the process was, we have the tab pulled up.
Did she, did, the amount of Scotty process involved an interview with the board? I don't know if we kept that at this level, so.
Yeah.
Pulled up, yeah.
Yes.
Kind of a daunting.
We're just excited, yeah. We're not quite as done.
But I think you should probably vote.
I think we should.
Yeah, on her.
Yeah.
I don't think it would hurt.
I don't. We certainly wanna welcome her.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so I will take a motion to appoint, um, West Olby as our student representative on the board. Fair motion?
So moved.
Okay, Beth, as I look at you. Okay, Beth has, uh, moved the motion. Hannah seconds. Okay, um, any further discussion?
Nope.
Okay, we'll do a roll call. Beth?
Aye.
Hannah?
Aye.
Nikki?
Aye.
Heather?
Aye.
Okay, we are welcoming West to be the student representative. Excited to see her in September. Okay.
Are we, so going back to staffing, are there still any holes that need filled?
There's a position posted for a Spanish teacher as well as.
Did we make that a world language teacher people listing or is that?
How do we post it? I think we posted the Spanish.
Okay, and there was like some conversation.
Yeah, there was, we posted the Spanish for now, we have not gotten any applicants. There's also a part-time, a point-five instructional coach position that is title-funded, that is posted.
So is that gonna impact, I think, well, you and I talked about Spanish not potentially having a huge impact on programming.
Correct.
With the instructional, instructional coach?
We will still be able to utilize Patty Gray, who is the SU level instructional coach. Between her and Angie and Brittany and the curriculum team, they will make sure to, to support all of us as, as we need it. The other.
It'd be great to get somebody, though.
It would be, absolutely.
Yeah.
Um, and the other hole, hole that we have not filled yet is the long-term subposition for a PE teacher. We posted that back at the end of June, but haven't gotten any applicants at this point. We'll re, we'll refresh the posting.
Okay.
We'll put the screws.
Well, there's some great baby carriers.
Our neighbors, he was the.
So maybe we can see, we'll just strap the baby. Welcome to Motherland in America. Right, exactly. Okay, so we are now on to setting the next agenda.
September 5th.
September 5th?
Yep.
And I have on my list and our administrative report, I will go over this with West, but also recap it for the board, the roles and responsibilities of the student representative.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Is there anything else that you would like to see? From now until then, I'll reach out to Black River Design so I could give you just an update on what that looks like.
Yeah, oh, um, like, um.
I have it on my list to, um, to have the guy come and talk maybe October or so just to walk through some ideas for the board, so it'll, it'll be upcoming.
Okay.
Share your, our Heartland wigs.
Ah, yep.
Uh, what, we'll have, we'll have set our goals.
Oh.
Or we, we call them wigs, wildly important goals.
Yeah.
Lindsay, are we gonna have a, a woods update? Because aren't we doing like some crazy woods project with accessible?
Yep, I can add that, yep.
Yeah, thank you. And also, are you gonna, um, can we include, um, like, if you have set these things by any chance, like the welcome back nights and the like open house night, if that's something different? Or just sort of, a little calendar would be lovely.
Yep, and I'll probably, I will also put it in the welcome back newsletter to all families. Those dates are already set, so I'll put it in that as well.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep.
Just wondering, like, with the enhancing, with the freedom and accessibility down there, is there any thought and plans around PD for teachers to support that?
To use it.
Get more time out there to.
That would be great. It hasn't been anything, yeah. Yeah. Well, those, Lauren is an expert, I mean, she could.
Oh, yeah.
She could do a training. I don't, it's not in the PD calendar, I can tell you that, but it doesn't mean, um, it can't happen at Heartland during staff meetings. You could, I mean, one way to, one way to show staff how to use it is to use it.
Yep.
Have your staff meeting down there and makes it less scary.
Yep.
Yeah, that's kind of fun. Get the fire, get the fire permit, we should have no problem this year, right?
Yeah. And I.
But we should put that on our list of things to.
I mean, there's, there's, I know my, some of my staff went through full year of PD that once a month they had two staff, two people come in and they did, uh, it was just like two hours. It was part of, like, we, we don't do like, we, we get out early every Thursday, so it was like Thursday, PD time at the end. Okay, much of the core. And so, and it was very much like, this is what we're doing. So it was a year, so it was really reinforced.
Over and over again?
Over and over again. And then it was, the following year, it was like, we met with them twice, you know? And like, like, we're back and seeing what we're doing.
Who did that, do you know?
Eliza.
It was Eliza?
Yeah, I think we were.
Yep. Probably, but there may be some way that they, I mean, I, I, when I was at Aduquiche, they would come and just go outside with classrooms, like during the school day and.
Right.
Help facilitate. Yeah, yeah.
And I'm, I mean, I'm happy as a volunteer if I can come in.
Yeah.
Or if there's, I can buy a PD, like, yeah.
If things don't line up, yeah.
Was it grant-funded? You know.
Or the S R funded?
Yeah, I mean, it was, it was, actually, it was.
Before that?
I think they started right before code.
Yeah.
But it was really interesting to see because they ended up developing an entire like seasonal slideshow for every single grade of this, like, this is what literally it looks like in the outdoor classroom, this, whatever. So it was like also.
That's very cool.
The teacher sharing what they're up to.
That would be really.
It was really cool just to put out there to the world.
Yeah, like, I think it'd be cool to share.
Yeah.
Oh, I have it, I mean, if they wanted, I guess, because, see if it's okay to share.
Yeah. Yeah, great.
And I think ideas are
Yeah.
And some of it too is just voicing that, like, do you have, what I find is like, teachers tend to use me, like, like in all these different levels, is it's just like, you actually want me to come in and teach a lesson from the ground? This is what we're doing on brick and everything, you just kind of want to observe. Is it, we're team teaching this together, or is it, you just need an extra warm body to make sure that you can pull this new thing off that you want to drive? So it's like, you know, all those just different kinds of levels. It's important that I find that, you know, just try and get up and do things that's interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah. We probably should talk about budget for the level of September. If that goes through the leadership.
Preliminary.
Yeah. Yeah. Lots of ideas at this budget level. No actual numbers.
Yep.
I think that's, that is, compared to today, a very hard
That's good. Good, yep.
Okay, I, I think, I think that's it. Um, well, is there a need for any discussion, any executive session around this?
I don't believe so.
I want a tour, so I don't know if it's like school business that we have to come back and
I think we just have to say to the public, public, if you would like a tour, contact the school.
Yeah. So I guess we can adjourn and we can go on a tour, but not talk about
But not talk school, yeah. Yep, you can do that.
Looking at the school.
Yes, you can do that.
We won't make any plans or we will not discuss the future. We will look at the present only, what is present in front of us.
Can I go on the tour?
Somebody wants to. Oh, look at her, she's so sad.
I'm in Florida. I'm trapped in Florida. I'm not trapped yet.
In Florida, that's right.
Yeah. It'll be okay. Is Colleen down there too? No, she's, she's got family. Okay, let's go on a tour and let's call for adjournment.
Okay.
Okay, Beth moves to adjourn.
Oh, second.
Anna seconds. Okay, and I'm not going to do a roll call, although in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're done.